Six o'clock. I'll call the July fourteenth, twenty twenty, meeting of the With County Board of Supervisors to order. I note we do have a quorum with the exception of Ms. Lawson, all the supervisors are here. Tonight, we have Father Bernie Ramirez from Saint Mary's Catholic Church to offer the invocation. If you would please rise and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
In the pardon of the sun, in the Holy Spirit, amen. Heavenly Father, in your infinite goodness, you have made us stewards of your abundant gifts. Help us to continue pouring out these gifts in service to one another in faith, hope, and love. Coming together, we ask your guidance, wisdom, and support. Bless each one of us here in grants that we may have the clarity of mind, compassion, due diligence, and integrity as we engage in meaningful discussions. Guide our hearts and minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought, and speech. As one community, we implore your protection against COVID-19. Keep us under the shadow of your mercy. We pray for those afflicted that they may be restored to health soon. Be with those who care for the sick and lift up all tools of your love in this trying life. Whatever we do in order to accomplish, may it be for the greater glory of you and for the service of humanity. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda is Citizens Time. Have several people signed up. We'll go down the list. Ms. Linda Myers.
Yes, good evening, gentlemen. A couple of weeks ago, I sent some information about a resolution that came from the VCDL concerning our gun rights and so on. And I was wondering, I wanted to make sure you had all seen it. You did see it. Okay. We all know what our governor is always trying to pull. The resolution is very forthright, and it will certainly protect all our citizens in this county and visitors. And I'd like to encourage you to take this resolution and make it official, an official With County resolution, so all our citizens continued, continue to have our rights and not have them restricted or not, and not have visitors' rights restricted or anything within the county. So I'm encouraging you to put that on your next agenda. And if you need copies, I have extra copies. Anybody? Okay. In addition to that, considering the way our history is being twisted and turned and made upside down, I was wondering, since With County residents, we fund our schools here, if we can encourage the school board perhaps to give us some books, our history books in particular, and have our Historical Society, the With County Historical Society, which we also do some funding of, look at those and make sure that our history is right, proper, and truthful, instead of having our kids perhaps being indoctrinated with ideas and untruths the way the histories are being turned. So I wish you would think about that and approach the school board and ask them to also think about this, to make sure our kids are getting a proper education when it comes to our history. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Betty Blair. And if I mispronounce your name, I apologize.
Blair, Betty Blair. You can't read my writing. The With County Solar Project is joining my land, and I feel like that, I would like you folks really to look into the pros and cons and not make a hasty decision about this project. I'm not sure. I think it just needs to slow down and make sure that it is right for us. And so I don't think I could probably answer any questions, but I think Susan back here is going to be talking, and she seems to, I have, you know, if you look at the internet, you find the bad. And the solar project here, you've got some good, so there, I guess there's bad and good, but I just want it really to slow down and make sure that it is right for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bear, before we move on, we do have several folks signed up to speak on that project, and I know it's down on the list with the Economic Development Committee. Do you want to let them speak and then?
I think let them speak, and then we'll discuss it at that point in time.
I knew it was down further on the agenda. I didn't know if they all wanted to speak. In keeping with the theme, we'll call Mr. Derek Davis. Ms. Cody Jones.
I know my mother has a lot more to say on this issue than I do, but growing up in the area and stuff, I definitely worry about the project with our farms and our cattle and stuff definitely getting into the natural water sheds around there, because if any of that water gets polluted either during construction or through the solar and it's like continued use, our entire farm is dead, because our cattle rely on a lot of that natural water and stuff, and we run on spring wells and all that. If that water gets polluted, we're pretty much done, because the cost of going on the county water and stuff would be hugely great to what we already run through the normal water system that we have there with the ponds and the natural streams and wells and things. And I have to live with that for the next sixty to eighty years, hopefully. I'm holding out hope with that. So having that issue for another sixty to eighty years would definitely greatly impact going forward, because I would be the next inheritor to that land after my mother and my grandfather and stuff. So I'd definitely like to keep the land safe from any inherent risk to that watershed and stuff, because that farm, like I said, would pretty much go dead after that, and the county would lose that tax revenue and the money and stuff that comes from that farm.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Susan Branscombe.
Thank you all for giving us this time. And I also want to say, Mr. Rod, I appreciate the letter that you sent on behalf of Cliff Dicker and family for the parole on Mr. Wheeler and keeping him there. Any of us who were there that day, we still have a place in our heart, and it's not a day that we don't go by that thinks about him. So thank you very much for sending that letter for this entire county. On the solar project, I have done a lot of research, because my mother is one of the ones that is attached to the solar project. And actually, solar is not as green as what it says. It only has an efficiency rate of twenty-two point two percent. It's not a continuous energy source. It's an intermittent energy source. In order to mine, manufacture, and transport the quartz to the silicone, it is three hundred times more toxic waste per unit of electricity generated than in a nuclear power plant. It's seventeen thousand, two hundred times more potent on our carbon footprint than the greenhouse gases are. And when I went to this public meeting the other day, they said, you know, as long as they stay intact, everything's fine, but they are made with sulfuric acid, phosphine gases, chromium, cadmium, lead. And if any of that leaks into our systems, we have three natural water sheds there. They also go to the New River. What does the county use as one of its water sources? It uses the New River. How much is that going to cost the county to have to purify that water if any of this stuff happens to go to it? With County alone has more than a hundred and forty million dollars in tourism. People come to With County because of our beauty, our mountains, our parks, our trails. They're proposing to take eight hundred and fifty-eight acres to service fourteen thousand homes. Fourteen thousand homes that are not in With County, it's going to a power grid. The power grid there goes to other areas besides us. When I asked them what benefit it was to With County, they said, we're going to give them a hundred thousand in taxes each year. When I asked them about subsidies, they said it's eighty percent. They get a federal tax cut of eighty percent. There's two hundred and fifty-five thousand pounds of cattle that go off that farm. Even at a dollar a pound, that's two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars in revenue that comes to With County. There's four hundred thousand bitches of corn that comes off of that. When you put these solar panels up, you kill the natural vegetation. You kill out the animals that we have. There's degradation of the soil and the topsoil because it kills it out, because the solar panels are five degrees cooler underneath them. So it is going to kill out natural vegetation too. With it, when you lose the topsoil, you lose the ability for growth. Now, solar panels have a twenty to thirty-year shelf life. They can't go to a landfill. They have to go to a special place because of the hazardous materials for them. When I asked the gentleman about who was going to take care of this in twenty to thirty years, he says, oh, well, when we're done with the project, we'll probably sell it to one of our European investors. Now, I don't know about you, but I'm not too crazy about European investors having our power sources or having land or anything like that, because what happens if something goes wrong? Who do you go to? Who's going to fix it? Even with a power purchase to a power company, who's going to fix it for us? For me, the EMF and the radiation that's going to come from this, it increases your liver and brain cancer. It's going to take an entire community away from you all, because you know, once they start to come in, they continue to encroach on land. You lose an entire community. You lose an entire farming community. You lose multi-generational family farms who are there because of a solar power farm who's only going to serve fourteen thousand people, when it could do so much more and it could show so much more value to With County than what you all are utilizing now. Solar farm, when I have looked on the internet, it decreases the value of your land by three percent at least, and up to five percent. It also causes commercial property taxes. It causes erosion, flooding, grading, degradation, all of that stuff. You know, when we ask them about how close it was going to be, because we have cattle on either side of this, it's going to be within fifty feet. What happens if the cattle get through? There's no buffers. There's no anything like that. When we ask them about the New River Park, they said, oh, well, we're going to put it behind the tree line because the park is considered a natural historic. You're still going to have issues because of the heat that's going to be coming from it, because of the grading that they're going to have to do for all of this. So there's going to be a lot of different things that I hope you all will take into consideration that's going to happen to With County, to the families who have been there for years, to your environment. And I hope that you all will consider that this project is not right for With County and that we need to do other things, because agricultural alone brought in over sixty-five million dollars in sales for them. You know, it has an income of over two million dollars to some of the farm families here. Mr. Horni, I know that you've been a farm for many years, so you can understand how the loss is going to affect us with this solar farm coming in, because there's twenty-one thousand people who die daily of starvation. If we continue this land grab and we continue to take our land and we continue to take the farms away, the land of plenty is going to go hungry, because right now you have one in six children who are hungry every day. So I hope that you all will take that into consideration as you're planning. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. David Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm here to speak on a different solar project. The solar project I'm here to speak on is on Lover's Lane. I believe theirs is in the New River, correct? Basically, I've spoke with about three-fourths of the landowners in that area that abut to this piece of property. We were not aware of a meeting that happened, that was going to happen back in April, and of course, the COVID stopped the meeting, and they had some kind of teleconference meeting, and nobody knew about it. So we weren't able to speak on this issue. I believe Ms. Branscombe covered most of what I would like to speak about, too. Ours is coming all the way out to Lover's Lane, and we are concerned, there's houses within seventy-five feet of these solar panels, and we have a great concern. And we would like for the board to reach out. It's Caden Interjects, who's doing this project, so that we can have a meeting scheduled and voice our concerns. We're not opposed to it, per se. We're opposed to it coming out as far as it is. We want a buffer where we don't have to look at this from Lover's Lane. We're worried about property values. We're worried about a little bit of everything, just like the lady said. She's, she put it pretty much in stone, all of our concerns. And we would just like to have the opportunity to meet with this company and speak with them about our concerns and see where we go from there.
Mr. Ryan, not to interrupt you, but exactly where is the one on Lover's Lane? I've heard about the one that they spoke about on the river.
It's a piece of property that a man named Eric Crouchy purchased about two and a half to three years ago, and it is partially in the county and partially in the town.
Okay.
And it is, if you happen to know where the cell phone tower is on Lover's Lane, it's dead in front of there.
When you told, when you said that, I knew exactly where you're talking about.
Exactly. And it's basically going to cover roughly, I think, a hundred and thirty-five acres of the hundred and fifty-seven. It's basically covering the whole farm, other than where they found sinkholes at. And we're concerned about the road leading to this, where the construction entrance is, is seventeen feet wide. We're concerned about all the construction traffic on it. There's just a lot of concerns we have, and we want to be heard, and we want to voice our opinion on this. And it has gone through the process of being permitted. I spoke with Rhonda today with the county, and they don't have a building permit issued on it, but it has gone through the EPA permitting, the, I think, the Department of Wildlife. Basically, all the permits are in place, and it's supposed to start construction in August of this year, in the last nine months. So I don't know. Mr. Bear might be able to lead some into this. Do they require a permit when there's engineers involved? Do you have to have a building permit for this project?
Yeah, okay. Yeah. Obviously, some of the first thing they came to us looking for was zoning permits, and With County does not have any zoning. So I do not know what steps they've taken with Withville on the zoning permit.
It's been cleared because it's in A1 agriculture.
Okay. So I know that our building official is working, you know, to determine what types of permits, and obviously, they've got to go through, and just like Mr. Hooper here will talk about with what Savion Energy is going through, their permits by right with DEQ and all these other groups in the process.
Correct. Well, all of the permits through DEQ are in place. It's online. It's fairly easy to research what's going on. And we just want our voices heard. We want to have a say in this. We feel like that it was kind of done under a veil of secrecy, and here it is. It's happening that quick. And they're down there core drilling, and that's kind of what woke us up to, something's going on down here. I'd reached out to Supervisor Smith about a month ago.
Yes, sir.
And spoke with him on this matter, and of course, I knew that there wasn't any zoning in the county. But I just feel like when you have a project like this that's going to affect people immediately in that area, we should have a right to at least voice our opinion. So that's pretty much about all I have to say about it at this point. I don't know where we go from here, if we could get a meeting set up. Do you have any contact information?
We do. Caden.
Somebody does.
Yeah, we do. We've got a contact, obviously, with the landowner and also Caden Interjects. They, when they advertised their public meeting that they had, and Mr. Ryan is correct, they postponed that meeting and rescheduled it, and I think they had online options as well as in-person options when they had their meeting.
That's correct.
But in their advertisement, they did indicate the plan was available to review in different places, and they did drop off a copy of the plan here in the Building Inspection Office for you. So we have that contact information on it.
So they, did they actually have a physical meeting?
They, I do not recall the steps they took. They were, had a physical meeting scheduled. They postponed it due to COVID. I believe they had a physical meeting and the option of calling in, but I'm not a hundred percent certain on that.
None of the neighbors were aware of this. None of the adjoining landowners. And I don't know how you go about contacting them, if it's just through the paper, through radio. There has to be a better way, in my opinion. I mean, he could at least put a sign up notifying people. I mean, anything to let you know what's going on, so we can at least come out and have our voice heard.
I can tell you, the public meeting for ours is held in Matney Flats with little to no notification. And Matney Flats is about forty-five minutes away from where the actual, it was at Beagle Ridge, so I mean, it's pretty far out, and there was very little public communication. The way I found out about it was through an email that was sent to one of the landowners who had a vested interest in it, because they were the way to be able about it. So I feel like he does. A lot of this stuff has been kept very quietly, because they didn't want to have any issues or any land or input. And I can tell you, they aggravated us to be in there for a while. They cut gate locks off. They've been on properties that they had their business to be on. They left gates open and let cattle out. And, you know, speaking with legal counsel, those are classified misdemeanors that they can be charged on for that, because it's been a constant thing for a little while, and then it went away, and everybody thought, okay, it's gone. And then all of a sudden, here it is again.
And we'll, we'll check on that, Mr. Ryan. I don't know, have Mr. Bear check, and I'm sure he can get you the contact information for the company.
Okay.
So I don't, I personally don't remember seeing, I heard the last meeting, because they advertised on ninety-eight point one, and if you listen to ninety-eight point one, I wondered why they were having Beagle Ridge, just like you did. But I know that one was well advertised, if you listen to that station, but I'm not sure. We'll check on that.
All right. Thank you very much for your time.
And just for clarification, I don't think everybody understands it. This is other agencies' public hearing requirements. This is not any of With County public hearing. We don't advertise it. We don't do it. We were just notified of it, and in fact, I just checked the newspaper afterwards, just to make certain they had advertised it in the newspaper, like they said they had.
Is it required by law that they advertise? Is it a law or requirement?
I don't know the law, but I am under the assumption that part of their permitting by right requires them to do those public, just like us when we, when we're doing ours.
Absolutely. Thank you. Next up, we have Mr. Mike Forrest. And Mr. Forrest, I didn't mean to skip over. I was trying to keep the subject matter together. I didn't want you to think I forgot about you.
I'm here for the duration, so it's no problem. Later tonight, you have an agenda item to review the financial audit for the Apex Center for its first two years of operation. That ended in June thirtieth of two thousand nineteen. On page ten of the audit, the auditor stated that eighty percent of the revenue for the Apex Center for these two years was provided by With County. That's almost three hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. Also in the board packet are the financials for Apex through April of this year, ten months' worth of financials. According to that statement, five hundred and twenty-one thousand revenue, but out of that, three hundred and one thousand, or fifty-eight percent, was provided by the county. These numbers should not include the debt service, which, correct me if I'm wrong, is about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So if you add that for a couple of years, well over a million dollars has been contributed by the county. Also on page ten, or page ten, note number six says that Apex is to start paying the debt payments, forty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars every quarter, and then that would double in two thousand fourteen. There's no way this Apex is going to have those funds, I don't believe, if they've been losing money for the last, for the three years it's been in operation. I don't think it'll ever break even. This money is coming from taxpayers of With County. We can't go on throwing it away. This project was a pipe dream from previous boards. This board has the opportunity to hopefully correct some of this, make a contingency plan. If this thing doesn't work over the, by the end of four years, you need a plan in place so that it doesn't go into a fifth year while you decide to do something with it. Maybe you give it to the IDA to sell or promote for another use, but this should not be on the citizens of the county. There's laws. You know, this is a lot of money. Just as an example, this is more money than is in the budget for the seven fire departments in the county, about five hundred thousand for the county fire departments for all seven combined. Apex is sucking in a whole lot more money than that. I hope you will consider it when you get to the line item. I hope you look at the financials that were in the packet and see what it looks like for the current year, just ten months in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Forrest. So we have signed up for Citizens Time. I'll close Citizens Time. Mr. Bear, did you want to address the, can we skip forward to the Economic Development Committee report or?
However you'd like to, sir, if you want to, while we have people here.
Well, yeah. They're more than welcome to stay, and we appreciate the audience, if you want to lock that up and maybe explain to them what the process is on that.
Page one seventy-eight of your package is the Economic Development Committee report. Mr. Smith, if you don't care, I'll just report it unless you want to report it from the Economic Development Committee or Mr. Terry, whoever's got that one.
I'll take care of it.
Okay.
The Economic Development Committee met on July the seventh, twenty twenty, and recommends the following, that the Planning Commission review the With County Solar Project LLC proposed by Savion Energy to see if it is in substantial accord with the comprehensive plan.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I will speak to that. Mr. Hooper is here from Savion Energy. He and I have shared many emails over the last little bit about this. In your package, on the next page, you will see the letter addressed to me and to the Planning Commission requesting that this be, that this project be reviewed for accord with the comprehensive plan pursuant to the Comprehensive Code, or that a waiver of that process be granted. What Mr. Terry just presented was upon review by the Economic Development Committee, they recommended that not, that the board not consider granting a waiver, but do send this to the Planning Commission, which Mr. Hooper did attend the Planning Commission meeting last week to give them an overview of this project. But basically, for the Planning Commission to review this proposed project and to provide a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors indicating if such a project was in substantial accord with the comprehensive plan. So the recommendation from committee is to do so, to send this to the Planning Commission, let Savion Energy make a presentation to them, for the Planning Commission, to determine if this is in accord with our comprehensive plan directly. The comprehensive plan does not directly address solar facilities. Was, I guess, really a major topic or an issue in the last update of the comprehensive plan. So there is not really a direct statement in there stating anything about solar facilities. So Savion Energy has made a few, I guess, recommendations of where they feel they're following from the comprehensive plan, and the Planning Commission will have a opportunity to review that.
And just for information, if you're not up to date on your Planning Commission, they do have public meetings. They are posted on the county website. Each district does have a Planning Commission member appointed by the Board of Supervisors, and their contact information is also available.
Mr. Chairman, I will add there, next meeting will be Monday, August third.
So do we need to take any action on that?
Yeah, I would recommend that the board take action on the committee's recommendation to either approve it or revise, as you all deem fit.
Coming from committee, we don't need to second any questions or discussion. Coming from committee, we don't need to second any questions or discussion.
So again, we're just voting on letting the Planning Commission review.
Requesting Planning Commission to do it. And, Mr. Chairman, before we take, I, I do not know if, if Mr. Hooper has any comments he wanted to make, if you would like Mr. Hooper to make any comments to explain anything to you all of the process.
Looks to me he probably needs to address the Planning Commission first. He didn't sign up on citizens' time, so I, I would recommend he go before Planning Commission, then he can come back or contact Mr. Bear if you want to get on the agenda.
Actually, I sent you the presentation, I didn't know if I just wanted to say it briefly, so I apologize for not doing that.
And you all got to copy the presentation in your all's board package.
I was prepared to speak if you all would let me, but I didn't have time, okay?
I, I would just recommend that step first. Any other questions or discussion? Here and then we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Smith.
Uh.
Uh.
Yeah.
Uh. So approved. Getting back on track for our agenda, we have the payment of invoices, entertain a motion to.
Have a motion.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any invoice that any supervisor would like to pull out or discuss? Here and then we'll do a roll call vote for approval, Mr. Terry.
Uh.
Uh.
Yeah.
Uh.
So approved. The minutes of our previous meeting on June the thirtieth, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Have, have a motion and a second. Any corrections or additions? Here and then we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Smith.
Uh.
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 So approved. Moving on to old business, first item is appointments. Does anybody have any appointments?
Yes, sir. Sorry, Mr. Bear, go ahead.
I, I sent you all an email of a recommendation for the Workforce Development Board, if that is one you all would consider. It's Mr. Jeff Dunak, the plant manager at Somac America. Marty Holliday has spoken with him and he would be interested in serving. That it's always a hard position to fill and if we find someone that's willing to serve, I recommend, recommend us appoint.
And what was that gentleman's name again?
Jeff Dunak. And I do not know if I'm pronouncing that correctly or not.
You are.
Thank you.
Entertain a motion to appoint Mr. Dunak to the.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Here and then we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
Uh.
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 So approved. Mr. Terry, were you going to speak on the one that I had or did you have a different one?
No, sir. Mr. Billy Anderson and I, I believe is that the, the Mount Rogers Planning District seat, I believe, Mr. Chairman, I would make a recommendation to appoint Mr. Anderson to that position.
Have a motion to appoint Billy Anderson to Mount Rogers Planning District Commission, have a second.
Okay.
Have a motion and a second. I do know Mr. Anderson, he's previously, I'm not sure if he's still on the Planning Commission for the town of Ruritutu, but he, he's a engineer.
Surveyor.
Surveyor.
Yeah.
He's been very involved in some of the downtown projects. I think he'd make a, a good addition. Anybody else have any questions or discussion? Here and then we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Smith.
Uh.
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 So approved. Any other appointments under old business?
The, I, I just will mention, I have been in discussions with Mountain Cap. They meet quarterly on the third Tuesday, six or six-thirty regularly. They do still have a vacancy. They are ideally someone, from the financial side, would be beneficial if anyone has any
I looked back there at Mr. Forrest, Mr. Forrest, but he didn't throw his hand to serve on the board.
I worked it on and I saw.
Good plan, sir. All right, moving on, we have the fire department pool filling request. I believe you sent out some information on that, Mr. Bear.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, and, and this is just a, a draft policy and procedure we put forward. At the last meeting, you all talked about receiving some requests to fill pools. Just a little bit of information, currently, Ruritutu Fire Department, Withfield Fire Department and Max Meadows Fire Department have indicated that they are not filling pools. Ruritutu indicated they used to. They ran into a couple of liability situations or hurt of liability situations and then one time they, they, they went out and ran over something in the yard and ended up puncturing a tire and it cost them more in the tire repair and everything else than it was, what they were getting in donations for the pool. Currently, the other three county departments, it's my understanding, would be interested in filling pools. What you've got here, and, and my recommendation is, if we go forward with it, is having some sort of policy in place and a procedure that everyone follows. And primarily, we're looking at filling pools in areas where people do not have access to public water. Where they have access to county water, they can afford to run three thousand gallons or five thousand gallons or eight thousand gallons to fill their pool. The county has always had a pool filling policy that they write off the sewer charges associated with pool filling. So if somebody puts four thousand gallons of water to fill a pool, the water department does prepare a, a request to write off the sewer charges. Obviously, everyone pays for the water that they use. What's proposed here is just sort of a form that fills out and then a fee schedule for every thousand gallons of water that is used. And basically, what that proposal is, is twelve dollars for the water that they're purchasing and that is basically our water rate plus about a ten percent markup on top of it, just rounded up to twelve dollars, just to go through the, the policy or the process and procedures of doing this. Ten dollars for vehicle usage, wear and tear and fuel, and then a thirty-eight dollar amount to go to the department. Now, this is open for discussion and talking to the departments, they were talking about getting donations of thirty-five dollars to fifty dollars or whatever the amount would be, but this is per thousand gallons. And then, you know, we got a proposal on here if it's over fifteen miles. And that's one of the things to be discussed is if what I'll call the three northern fire departments are not filling pools, do the southern fire departments run up into those other areas to fill pools? And if so, if it's a thirty mile trip to go, you know, out into the cove to fill a pool, additional charges on a per mileage basis to do that. The next page is just a, a policy and a guideline and then there's a pool application form that gives them a, a place to indicate address, location, and then a, an agreement and a, a waiver of responsibility associated with it and then a place for the fire department to fill out that they have completed the project. So that's just for your all's discussion. Revisions if necessary for, for a process. I understand the fire department's goal to try to use this as a fundraiser. I realize they are in difficult COVID times. I am not in favor myself of using the four and five hundred thousand dollar equipment that we have to go out and fill in these pools. I just, there have been issues in the past of going outside of the county and filling pools, of the department's advertising and, and, but if we are going to do it, I do recommend that we establish it through a, a centralized policy that people come up here and, and make the payment for it up here and then we send the information to the fire departments to go fill the pool.
Anybody have any questions?
Sure. So my concern is still the liability. There, there's a big liability there, you know, going into people's yards, these tankers, if you blow the side of somebody's pool out, you know, is the county responsible for it or is the fire department? So that, that's the, one of the big things for me. The other one is, is you kind of alluded to it, so if, say if Max Meadows is not filling or Withfield and Ivanhoe goes to the cove and then there's an emergency in Ivanhoe and a house burns down and people die because that truck's on the other end of the county, then there's a liability to the county there. So I think we need to look at this a little more, to be honest with you. That's my opinion. I mean, I know there's six other people here, but I think the liability's too great for sixty bucks.
Yeah, not only that, on page forty-nine, it's got a liability form that they sign when they come to get the, their pool filled. Does that stand up in court?
It depends. It depends on the facts of each surface. It's no guarantee.
Good lawyer answer, Mr. Morris.
It depends always on that lawyer.
And, and you know, and you know, you, you can always, you know, fall back on due regard, but you know, we're not, these guys aren't trained to fill pools and, and I wonder how that's going to come into play and like Mr. Smith said, you know, my biggest worry is if, number one, I think if we, we would give them permission, they need to stay within their fire district, but you know, some of these fire districts are, are pretty big. And, you know, God forbid they're filling a pool and I, and I understand with everything being shut down because of Corona and, you know, people buying pools up like crazy and them wanting help for citizens, I just, I see that side of it, but you know, worst case scenario, I guess I'm a pessimist, I, I would hate for something to happen and we lose life over, over recreation. That's, so. Anybody else?
Yeah, I, I would like to.
You don't have to speak up, I can.
I can, I can see where the fire department's not getting their donations that they normally get, but, but money is short, money's tight and I don't know if it would get any better if we, in better shape than what we're going. I think the biggest money that was made by the fire department was getting the water out of the creek, not paying for the water, and then getting a two hundred, two hundred fifty dollar donation from somebody for bringing that water. But this, what we got proposed now won't change all of it. And if I live close to With County water, I took it up to the spigot and run it through the meter because it ain't going to be no more cost. So I, it really don't matter to me.
Anybody else?
I'll agree with Mr. Smith, Mr. Chairman. I think, I think there's a lot of liability exposure and I think we need to make sure we got i's dotted and t's crossed before everyone would agree to move forward with this, with this proposal. I understand that they are struggling with COVID and can't get the donations that they normally get and they can't have their fundraisers. And I would love us, love for us to find a way to, to help those departments, but at the same time, we don't want to jeopardize our departments, our citizens by taking these measures at this point. Again, that's my opinion. There's six more of us here, but that's kind of where I thought processes are.
Mr. Horni?
I mean, I can see the good and the bad in both of it. I mean, you're talking about the liability of about a house burning down. I mean, in a way, in a way, it can be training and they actually take trucks out of the county for training sometimes, so. I mean, I can, I can go however y'all want to try it.
I mean, we don't have to take any action, we can leave it on the table, correct?
You could leave it on the table and I would tell the fire departments that we've not approved any policy yet and at this time, the, the county equipment should not be used for filling pools and that's where we are.
Leave it there long enough, it'll be winter and they won't be filling pools. All right, here are no motions, moving on. Anything else under old business, Mr. Bear?
Uh, no, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Move on to new business. First item is the Apex Authority. I think we have a staff update. Mr. Bear or?
Mr. Hager will make a presentation, yes, sir.
Hope everybody's doing good today. I appreciate you inviting me here to give an update on the Apex. So staffing, just to kind of give you, we're, it's down to just Jen and I, we're the only two there. All part timers have been put pretty much on hold for further notice until we get through this COVID-nineteen situation. There is or has been a posting out there for the GM position. I am just the interim GM currently. They haven't decided who they're going to fill for that, for that position. So I'm here today to speak on behalf of, of the Apex until they decide who will. I have been performing the position to the best of my ability and we'll go from there and see what happens in the future, but I don't know. But I presented to each one of you, you should have a list of this presentation. It shows you the events that's currently scheduled for the fall. It also shows you within that which ones of those events we do have signed contracts for and which ones we do not. Some of those we're working, we're working toward. So we're currently booking or working on booking the events. Met with several promoters in the last couple of weeks. We've been, met hard in the last couple of weeks. I've met with one today, I met with one Sunday, met with two last week. All of these are larger events, however, what we're finding is the majority of these promoters are wanting to push things out to, to two thousand and twenty-one. With the uncertainty of what COVID-nineteen's going to do and what the state of Virginia governor's going to do as far as regressing back to phase one or phase two with, with everything the way it's going in Florida and other, and other places, we just don't know. And, and of course, you know, the promoter scare is if they come in here and spend twenty thousand dollars to promote an event and they can't get the ticket sales that they need, you know, to, to bring in the revenue, it's an issue. So what we're trying to do to combat that is, right now, we're trying to, and the only thing we can do right now is do smaller events anyway. I mean, under phase three, we're limited to a number of seating. We still have all the six foot regulations in process and, you know, you seat two thousand people in the building and of course, we're not to that in phase three, but even with what we are at, by the time you do six foot spacing, you can't even reach that number. So we're doing small things. Some of the things that we would like to try to do, and I've, I've been in conversation with the local Ruritan for Max Meadows, Donnie Dean, he's trying to partner with the Ruritan Club in Pulaski and what we're trying to do there is have more of a, a self-promoted event. It would be hardly any cost of dollar, the Apex Center, and that event will bring in seven hundred to a thousand bingo players and we can have some proceeds that will come in if we can get that accomplished. We are having a little bit of pushback with some of the Ruritan members and if for some reason that falls through, my next step is to have conversation with both Pulaski and with County Moose Lodges and see if there's, it's something that they could possibly partner with us on to help us out. Just to kind of give you some ideas of some of the events that we've been talking to here lately, I met with JR Drake, Rodeo Association, today. He's looking at doing an event. He was looking at October, but with the guidelines of COVID-nineteen, we're going to probably push that out to the last weekend of January. Met with a young lady out of Raleigh, North Carolina, come up and met with me last week. She does a, an event called Everything Equine. They usually have about four thousand attendees at each event. That'll be a three day event and four thousand people each. That'll be a three-day event and 4,000 people each day. It'll be in and out of the facility, in the building, up at the barn, parking lots. They literally, when it says Everything Equine, it is Everything Equine. She is booking two events for next year, one in April and one in October. Then she has another event that's, it's a smaller event that she wants to do in October of this year, which I think will yield good for the kids. It's basically a horse show where a child can bring a horse in, and they have a 15-minute slot period where they physically do tricks or training with the horse. And it's a ticketed event for people to come and watch. It's a little bit better than just a horse show. It's actually some stuff going on. But that would be, that would be a good event. We've also, we have a cattle show that's coming, weekend after next. We're expecting 300 to 500 cattle at that show. We'll be utilizing the barn, hopefully, to give you an update on it. Spoke with those contractors today, and Stephen may be able to give you a better update than I can. They are planning on having three quarters of all the outlets wired in the facility and a quarter of the lights wired in operation by the 24th. And then that'll allow us to utilize that barn for tie-ups for those 300 to 500 cattle that we've got coming in on the 24th and 25th. The barn is going to yield a lot of return for us, I think. There's a lot of things that we're trying to do, thinking outside the box with some of the things there. Right now, everything we're doing or that we can do within the barn is agricultural events, but we're still trying to think outside the box in other ways that we're doing some things agriculturally in the main building that we can still utilize the barn and pull rent from the barn. We're also trying to partner shows as far as thinking outside the box. So, you know, when we talk about revenue and how that revenue stream's coming in right now, it's slow and it's so, it's, it's so precise because of this COVID-19, we're really having to do some different things to think about it. But we have a barbecue event on October 31st. I have been in contact with the company out of East Tennessee. It's called Songs of the South. They do a tribute band, small concert to, a tribute to Alabama. We're trying to get them in here on that Saturday night to partner with the barbecue event. And at the same time, we've, we've got a gentleman that wants to do a cattle sale in the barn, same day. And there's no reason why we shouldn't be able to, to hold all three of those events at the same time. And actually, the good thing is with the cattle sale being there and the people that'll be at it, with the concert being there, the people that'll be at it, all of that will help the barbecue event. And the people at the barbecue event will come to the concert. It's just, each one will feed off the other, is what we're hoping for. I think that'll be good. Spoke to and met with CNI Gun Shows, they're the folks that's out of, that does all the gun shows around Civic Center. Spoke with them, give them a price list of what we're looking at doing and trying to get them in here sometime between October and March of '21. I don't know exactly when that'll be. That could be a very large event for us. Upward of 5,000 to 10,000 people passing through the Apex in a single day. Two-day event, two-day gun show. You know, with, you know, the challenges that we're seeing outside of the, you know, the COVID-19 and all of its restrictions, one of the challenges that we see at the Apex Center right now is, you know, one, obviously donations. Donations or sponsorships is a huge thing. So one thing that, that we're doing to combat that, that side of things is we're in process of redoing our complete website and our Facebook. And within that, we're going to post on the Facebook site and the website places where the supporting local citizens of With County and the regional citizens of the state of Virginia that support the Apex can go on there and make donations or sponsor the Apex. And we're hoping that will help out a lot. Don't know how much that's going to yield, we'll just have to wait and see kind of how it plays to the people. Right now, with COVID-19, as I heard one of you say a minute ago, money's tight. I think it's COVID. It, people's not letting loose at anything right now, especially going towards sponsorships. Another, another big opportunity that we have, and I'm still trying to figure out a way to combat this one, and this is probably our biggest one, and I can bring this up to you and let you take a look at it. Mr. Chairman, can you pass it down? When, when we do, or when we're pricing out events, and so the gentleman I spoke to today with the Rodeo Association, he does an event there twice every year. And he can go and have a two-day event, the exact same event that he has there for $2,300 for a two-day event, will cost him with our facility close to $7,000 by the time you put EMS and security and everything in it that needs to be in it. And I'm finding ways to try to, try to sell the Apex. Number one, we're not in Kentucky. Number two, Kentucky's not sitting on the interstate system that we're sitting on that will hopefully yield a larger attendance for these individuals. And there's other reasonings that, that I'm trying to sell this particular venue to these type of promoters that are finding venues that are much cheaper than ours. And, and unfortunately, you know, it's a catch-22. These facilities are older facilities, they're supported, a lot of them, 90% of these facilities, if you do any research on them, they're supported by colleges, universities, so forth, that, that help fund the facility in different ways. And we're very young. We've technically opened the doors on January 17th of 2019. We've been in business or in operation for just a little over a year and a half. And, you know, no, we're not ready or at a point where we're going to be profitable. I hope to, and feel that we can be profitable with, with the right management, right staffing, the right ideas, and thinking outside the box on everything that we do. I think we can be. Within that, you know, my goal right now is, is pretty much the same as it was a year ago, six months ago, is I'm doing everything I can to get as many events in as I can, to bring as much revenue and to save as many expenses as I can along the way. We've cut, just this past Saturday, we had a small jackpot event, probably had 250 people in the building. Wasn't a large event. We didn't bring in a lot of revenue, but we also didn't have hardly any costs. We didn't have any staffing there. I come in and unlock the door. I come in and visited four times throughout the evening just to check, make sure everything was going all right. I had a hard line to the promoter that if he needed anything, he could pick up phone and call me. I stayed on call, I literally lived three miles down the road, so I was right there. We also set a deal with them that they clean the facility behind themselves, so we didn't have to incur that charge on them, nor did we incur the charge. They provided the labor for it. The lighting in the facility, we use minimal lighting. We didn't cut all the arena lights on. We cut about a third to a half of the lights on to minimize electric cost. Same thing, you know, we, we still had the cost of the toilet paper, the paper towels, what water usage they used at the restrooms and to water their, their horses and so forth, but minimal within that. And that's where, that's what we're trying to do with every event right now, is minimize all the expenses that we can and bring in as much revenue as we can for each event. That's pretty much the update on the, on that. Does anybody have any questions or?
So are you saying that you priced yourself out of business?
No, no, I'm not saying that at all. The prices that we, that we stipulate within our price list or our guidelines are based off of the revenue that we have to bring in in order to meet the bills that we have to Apex today. So that's where those prices come from. You know, as I was saying a minute ago, a lot of the venues other than us, you take Moorestown or Fletcher or Clemson or the facility that I just handed you a list of, every one of those has supporters that help support. They, the proceeds that come into that facility generally go right back to the school. There's not, there's not a large operating cost. The, they're not there, their aspects in the business are a little bit different than ours. We, we are 100% business minded and have to be because we don't have, other than the county, which will go away, other than, in time, but after y'all's support ends, we have no support. So our support has to come from sponsorships. If we don't get the sponsorships, it's going to come from sales. So not saying we're trying to price ourselves out of business, we're just trying to price ourselves where each event that we have, we're operating in a green rather than a red. That's where we have to be. So with that said, going back to what I said earlier, my job is to try to sell our venue as the Apex and what we can benefit versus some of these other facilities that they're trying to utilize out in China or wherever it's at. Trying to make it easier for them to, you know, where we're located, just, you know, number one draws more people. We're closer to everything. And I think we live in a community that, you know, you're close to, you're close to the town of Withfield, Fort Chiswell, you can be in three different states within 30 or 45 minutes. I mean, we're right here. So that's one thing we're trying to sell to folks.
So if you wanted the main building, what would the cost be, say a Saturday?
So it depends on the event. So, so we just recently redone, revamped our price list. And within that, we separated our, our regular events versus our ag events. So we have two different price guidelines. But also within that, what I'm trying to do based off of, off of the event, is more customize the event pricing. Because, give you an example, CNI Gun Show comes in, spoke with them for about two hours. Quote-unquote, "We're not interested in splitting gate fees, we're not interested in splitting vendor fees. All we want to do is play one rental rate and be in and out, gone." And that's fine. I can set it up that way. But if I set it up with that, that way, I'm going to give him one, one bottom line dollar, but I'm still going back in and I'm calculating those things in behind scenes of what our cost for the cleaning would be for EMS, for security, you know, our gate fees, our 10% admission taxes, you know, everything has got to be included in that. So with, you know, some of them may need to use our panels, some may need to use our tractor or skid steer to build, to build a track. All of those things, we need to charge for. You know, it's wiring, installing the equipment. We just replaced the teeth on the, on the tractor, it cost $700 back in early winter or late winter to replace the teeth on the tractor. That stuff isn't cheap. Those teeth go down about every four weeks of horse shows. That's how quick they get ate up in that, in that 10% sandy soil. There's no reason that we shouldn't charge for those things. And we need to be. It's just a matter of getting it sold.
So is there, is there a price list that we could get?
Yes, I, I'll email you one. So for a regular event, it's $2,500 a day or, or $2,000 a day if it's more than one day. So a two-day event would cost them $4,000. Now, on top of that $4,000, they still have to pay the EMS fees of $100 an hour, depending on how many hours their event is and how long we need EMS there. They still have to pay security fees, and that's based off of how many security they need, whether it's armed or unarmed. Unarmed is $20 an hour, armed is $30 an hour. Those rates are complete 100% pass-through rates. EMS charges us $100, we charge them, we don't mark that up. Cleaning fees, same thing. Then, you know, we have administration costs in there, costs to replace the usage of the toilet paper, the paper towels, my time for setting up the event, Jen's time for booking things, all of that cost has to go into that somewhere. So there's line items down at the bottom that you'll see when I, I'll even send or supply you guys with the list that we use when we're calculating the end-of-day balance sheets for each promoter. I can send you a copy of that as well.
Who do you do for EMS?
Lead mines. That's the only one we'll use. I had a gentleman ask, JR Drake today asked me, said, one of his questions was, can I get my own EMS? Because we can go out and give volunteer EMS. I said, no. I said, everything we do is through lead mines, period. One way in, one way out. It's the only thing, it's the only people we use. They're our local EMS, we want to utilize them to support those folks. So.
If, if you'll send that price list to all of us?
I will, I'll do that.
Anybody else have anything else for Mr. Hager? I guess, you know, the, the last authority meeting I attended before the, I don't want to say shutdown, before the coronavirus, whatever, you know, they, they had talked like they had a, they had a good plan, the new board members, and they realized that, you know, the part that bothered me was you, the promoters were making $30,000, $40,000 on the weekend.
You're right. You're right. Guess what? I have, you and I.
Let me, let me finish. You know, you talk about college and everything, those promoters were making that money on the backs of With County taxpayers.
Yep.
That's who built that.
I agree 100%. And I'm trying to combat that, by the way.
You know, that just, we all need to stay on the same track.
I agree.
Or, there's going to be some hurt feelings in January.
So let me, let me explain, let me explain or kind of hit on that a little bit because fortunately, not all promoters are doing that. So you take most of our ag events, the majority of those, those, those events are not doing that at all. The events that, that are doing that on the back of our citizens' dollars are people like the monster trucks, the circus, Victory a little bit. And what I'm trying to do, and I'm renegotiating those contracts, and that's something that I've explained to the authority board, and Stephen can contest this, one thing that we can't do going into this second half of this year, and especially 2021, is go in with these promoters with an expectation that we're giving them this facility without proper charges. Because if we do that, only thing that's going to do is set a precedence to them, which much like our, some of them already have from, from previous, is that they can come in here and rent our facility for the same price they did last year and leave us, you know, just, I'll give you an example. Monster trucks, the way they do their ticket sales is, the majority of it is online. So what we see is the ticket sales physically at the gate. I don't agree with that. Because when they turn around and tell me, we get a dollar a ticket, which I'm changing that, by the way, we get a dollar a ticket, but, so I get $700 at closing for the, for the admissions that come in the door. But I'm like, hold on a minute, there's 2,500 people sitting out here between what's sitting in the seats and what's walking around. I was like, where's, where's the other 1,300, $1,400 that should go with that? Well, that's pit passes, that's people who, family members from, from the truck drivers, the, you know, the monster trucks or support people. I was like, you know what? That's gone. Because I don't care who you are. One, some of the things that we're going to have to do to retrieve some of this funds, and I don't plan on putting it all back on the promoter. You know, the citizens are coming in utilizing the facility. Some of it needs to go to the citizens through maybe a small parking fee per vehicle, stuff like that. But at the same time, the promoters need to be relinquishing more of the, a percentage of the ticket sales. So like the promoter today I spoke to, we get 20% of the ticket sales. 10% goes to you as an admission tax, and 10% goes to us, period. And there's a lot of different things in the nature, and that's why I was talking about the customized pricing, depends on what they need. If they need to utilize our skid steer to build a track for two days, they're going to get charged for it. If they need to utilize the tractor to rake an arena, they're going to get charged for it. We got to quit giving those services, you know, if they need to utilize our cattle panels that get damaged and we have to replace, they're going to charge for it. But yes, I agree with you, Mr. Chairman. We can't, we can't let those promoters walk away with what they're walking away with, and, and we're not getting what we need to get out of it.
Does anybody else have anything for Mr. Hager?
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Bear, the next item under the Apex Authority is the audit. We all received a copy of that. Is there anything?
No, Mr. Chairman, just as with all of our authorities, when we receive a copy of their audit after they have reviewed it, we put it on the board package just for you all to accept. Ms. Gilman from their board is here, but Corbin Stone from Robinson Farmer Cox came and spoke at their meeting, I believe, last week on the, the presentation of the audit. While the financial numbers show the concerns that Mr. Forrest brought up, as far as control or as far as financial controls and things, the, the Robinson Farmer Cox was very pleased with where they were starting off for their first, for their first audit, and indicated that, you know, most time when they come into a new organization, it's a, they expect to find a lot more issues and a lot more recommendations than what they do. But all in all, it was a very easy process and they got an unmodified. in all, it was a very easy process, and they got an unmodified opinion on their audit. Obviously, financially, there are steps to take to continue to improve the, the operations. But no, no concerns came out of it, Mr. Chairman, and my recommendation is for the board supervisors to accept the audit.
And, and I will, you know, credit work, credits due, I was very pleased to see that they, I mean, technically, they had a good audit, because like you just said, that's dealing with auditors for the first time, sometimes not the easiest, so.
And, and they have an outside accounting firm that has been helping them throughout this process, and-
But sometimes there's more hands that are in it.
It helps out.
So entertain a motion to, do we just have to accept-
Just to accept the audit, yes, sir.
To accept the audit as presented?
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Here now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Smith.
Aye.
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 Aye. So accepted. Moving on to the COVID-19 update, Mr. Crawford? Can you give us some good news?
I take that as a no. So the good news is we're not in phase two, we're still in phase three from the governor today, but he is requesting that we do, that especially in the eastern shore, that they lock down just a little bit more and follow the social distancing, wearing masks, so forth. But for us, we are at sixty today, that's nineteen active cases, that's, you know, one, the one death that we had early and twenty recoveries. So we did have the scare this past week, well, I won't call it a scare, but the issue that we had at the sheriff's office that has been dealt with, cleaned, they'll be opening back up. And, and those that were exposed were tested and, and so forth, so we're in good shape there. We still have the testing going on. Today, the governor did say that we have more testing, we have met a, met a milestone in testing of, of a greater number in the state, and that, you know, around here, we still have the same testing facilities such as the health department on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Dr. Dove's office, the hospital, and then New River Valley and Marion Hospitals as well. So those are all options if anybody needs to be tested. Other than that, we're, we're slowly growing in numbers. I think Smith County did take a jump today and is ahead of us as of this afternoon, and of course Grayson and Carol do have a good amount. Lynn has three, so they're not gonna catch us, but they are growing over there as well. So everybody in the state of Virginia, every city, every county has at least one case now, so. Any questions?
PPE, talk a little bit about where we are.
So with CARES money coming in, we're really getting into how we're gonna divvy some of that out, and one of the main things, and one of the main things on my priority is buying PPE to not stockpile, but to have it ready if we have a second wave, or if we have something happens next year. We are, we, I've already purchased some things that we're waiting, and of course, with everything and supply chain right now, it's on back order, so, you know, especially masks, but we do have a good supply right now that we can move to places that need it, disinfectant, mask, gloves, as well as hand sanitizers. We do have that equipment here in the county that we can get to whoever needs it, just on request.
Our rescue squads, fire departments.
So they're, they're still above us in, in ordering that stuff, so they go to Henry Shine, they get that front-of-the-line ordering. They can still submit, and, and they do submit some of their stuff to us to get reimbursed through CARES, so.
Um, one thing, and, and, I talked to Dr. Poole this afternoon, the mister thing that the school board bought is supposed to ship in the next three or four days. I know that'll come in handy with their custodians, who, you know, they, they've done a phenomenal job, and I've, I've said it before, but, you know, they, they, they've cleaned every inch of every county building, so we appreciate that, but that's supposed to be in. DSS got their, I don't want to call it the sneeze guard, but whatever-
Providers.
Apparently, they got that today, so. I don't know. Anybody else have anything? It is what it is, and, you know, I tell everybody, we don't have a playbook, how to run a county with COVID-19, or how to run a school system, or how to run a court system.
Yeah.
After this is over, I'm gonna write one, I'm gonna retire.
Yeah. And the school board did release their plan for the year, and I think that it's out on social media and on, and on the webpage, so that is out for students or kids to look at, to start with their plan. I think there's two options in it, so.
And I, I believe I'd be incorrect in saying that that's a very fluid plan and could change at any time according to the governor's wishes.
That is correct.
Anybody else have anything for Curtis? And thank you for the updates. I don't know if you're keeping track of the numbers, if you've got a chart that you're charting it, or if you're getting it, but you've caused a lot of distress, because I've heard, have other counties reach out and want to know how come With County got it, and I said, well, our emergency coordinator gets it, contact yours, so next time y'all have a meeting, you might be the bad guy.
Yeah, understood.
Smith County started to get it, I think, so they, they've all caught on, so I'll take the, take the hit for that one, so, but thank you for sending those out.
Very well.
Thank you, Curtis.
And, and not COVID-related, but obviously, you all know, between officer shootings, between vehicle wrecks, between lost people in the mountains, our emergency services, sheriff's department, and everyone has been busy over the, the last little bit, and I appreciate, you know, all their work and Curtis' work in the process with that, so hopefully, we'd have a, maybe a couple of last hectic weeks coming up in front of us.
Yeah, very much.
Trying, trying to put that all out of my mind, that's why I didn't bring it up.
Understood.
All right, moving on, we have the 2019 delinquent personal property and real estate tax listings.
Mr. Chairman, I would request that you all approve the, at the request of the treasurer, the posting of the delinquent real estate in the enterprise on August 1st, and at the same time, we will publish, approve publishing both of those on our websites and social media sites.
And that'll be an updated list?
Be an updated list as of probably, I believe it's Friday, July 24th, whatever comes in by the end of that week. The less names we can take off of there, the less names we have to pay to print in the newspaper.
Entertain a motion to publish the 2019 delinquent real estate taxes in the newspaper and publish both lists on the county website?
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
What was the email about the people's names that had paid to be on there? Did you get one?
I can't.
Did you get an email about people's names being listed on there that had paid?
I don't, is that the one I sent?
There, there was an email that came in that, that indicated complaints about the, the name being on there, and it said, due to, to county error. What it was, was the commissioner of revenue's office on one of the tax districts had only applied the special tax district to the land and not to the improvements on the land, and they sent out supplemental tickets that were due in on June 30th that had not been paid, and so therefore, they show up as been delinquent also. So it was on the list because it was delinquent as of June 30th, but the taxes were, were sent later than, than the others in the process. So that was the complaint that was on it, but the, the, my understanding, those have been paid and have been cleared up in the process.
Any other questions? Here now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved. Next on the agenda is Mount Rogers Hazard Mitigation Plan Amendment.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, last, over the last several meetings, there's been discussion about the flooding. Mr. Smith mentioned even on the road coming into Max Meadows, any improvements there? What Mr. Crawford has put together here is just a, an amendment to go into the hazardous mitigation plan for Mount Rogers that we will submit upon your all's approval of this. And what this does, it just adds that into the plan, and that can assist Mr. Crawford and others with trying to obtain grant funding or program funding through different agencies to see if any assistance can be gathered to help out in these situations.
If I can add just one thing. So I did put in the Max Meadows, which is Reef Creek and Miller Creek's areas, and also the Dry Run Creek and Cribble Creek areas of Speedway. Those are the two major ones that we've got complaints on. If there are other ones that need to be in this plan, we can add that in. These, these are the two major ones that we're, we're gonna be seeking funds for in the next grant cycles, so.
Just, just kind of a question about the, the bridge there at Max Meadows, have we any leverage on getting that root ball out of the way that's up against the bridge?
So Johnny's been talking with VDOT, and talking if, if there needs to be an outside crew come in, or if, if, if that's outside of VDOT's area, or what, what needs to happen. I don't know if sure where it's come, the final talks have come to.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else? Entertain a motion to approve the Mount Rogers Hazard Mitigation Plan Amendment as presented?
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussions? Here now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 So approved. Moving on, we have the June 23rd, 2020 abstract of votes. You've received that, your packets, do we just need to?
No, actually, really not, but typically, we just take an, an action just to accept the votes that have been submitted to us.
So we don't need, I couldn't remember if we-
I, I would just take a motion to just indicate, except the tabulation of votes sent by the registrar's office.
Entertain a motion to accept abstract as presented?
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved. We have an appropriation request. Mr. Berry, you wanna summarize that?
Yeah, as you all know, we appropriate quarterly, based on the agreement that we have with the town of Withfield, it does require payment in full, so I have just added on here, request that you all amend and appro, not amend, just appropriate the remaining amount in organization 32026, so that we can make payment to the town of Withfield in compliance with our agreement.
And I did, I did talk to Mr. Berry about that, and he sent me, I couldn't find a copy of the agreement, and it was, it was spelled out in the agreement that we approved earlier in the year, so entertain a motion to amend and appropriate as presented?
Entertain a motion.
Have a motion, have a second?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, you said amend and appropriate, and it's not amend, it is already in the budget, it's just an appropriation?
Just appropriate.
Yes, sir.
Except to entertain a motion to appropriate the funds as presented?
Entertain a motion.
Have a motion, have a second? Second. Questions?
The dollar amount?
Yes.
I thought we agreed on a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
You did, this is just requ, this is, the, this department also has the debt service for the fire truck in it, so I'm just asking you to appropriate the entire thing, the hundred and twenty-five thousand is what will go to them, the sixty-eight thousand dollars is what goes to the debt service for the fire truck. So it's just appropriating the entire amount.
Any other question? Here now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 So approved. Anything else under new business, Mr. Berry?
No, sir, I don't have anything else.
Moving on to reports, we covered the Economic Development Committee, is there anything else? I'm trying to find it.
There is a budget committee recommendation, Mr. Chairman, page 214.
Have the budget committee report?
The budget committee met on June 25th, 2020, and recommends transferring of three-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-eight dollars from the high school construction fund, 700-260617, to the general fund for the coverage, for the overage on the George Wood High School construction project.
I thought we already approved it. The committee did look at this at the June 25th meeting. We included the amendment in the carryover and appropriations report that was in the June 30th board package, however, the, we did not include in the board package the committee's recommendation to transfer this out of the board reserves into the general fund. So it, it's just catching up to, to move the funds from the reserve account into the actual general fund.
Come from committee, doesn't need a second? Any questions, any other questions or discussion? Here now, do a roll call vote, Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 Anything else under budget committee?
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Board of Supervisors, Mr. Smith?
I do, I actually had a phone call from a resident on Orion Drive. I know 2021 is the, the next revenue hearing for that.
Actually, Mr. Smith, that one is one we've already applied for, and we are just waiting to hear word, which should be at any time on that project.
Yeah, I know, they, they are getting a little anxious there, especially with the rains that we just talked about at the areas that got hit, so it's the eastern end of the county.
There, and if I may, just to let you know, I did speak with the landowner of the actual right-of-way where that is, and they're willing to work with us on any plats that are needed to dedicate that right-of-way up through there. We're just waiting for word back from VDOT that the project is approved.
All right, good deal. So I go up the road about half a mile, the property there that the residential was having trouble with seeing up the road to the curve, I think it's Richardson's if I'm not mistaken, from Galax area. I know we had sent letters, have we heard anything about them maintaining their property?
This is not the one back towards?
Yeah, it's right above the high school, on the Ivan Hook Road there.
This is the one that they had mowed the path back? Is it, is it the ditch line again?
Well, the ditch line seems to be fine, from talking to the resident there, they're, they're wanting to, they want that piece of property maintained as a whole.
Okay.
So it's, you know, it's grown up pretty fast.
Um, the, the property itself, the, the, if I remember correctly, that is a vacant lot with just, we do not have anything that addresses the, the growing up of that, we don't have any mowing or anything like that in the process. The only issue we had looked at was long site distance on the right-of-way, but as far as the property, we don't really have anything we can address on it.
All right. The, the other items, I had sent in an email, so we're, I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Cook?
I have nothing.
Mr. McRoberts?
I have some issues to give to Mr. Berry as well. He's got them all put together.
No, I don't have much I care of.
That's a good way to say it, that's quick work.
That is quick work.
Route 94 had some flooding a couple of weeks ago, and they've done some repair work in the curves down there, but they've indicated that they have a contractor coming I want to say this week, but don't quote me on that, but I'll, I'll share that information with Mr. McRoberts so he can let the residents know, but an outside contractor's supposed to come in and work that entire corner right there. And the other's a litter complaint, and hopefully, we can get it cleaned up.
Mr. Horni? Mr. Hornet?
The only thing I had had is a lady called me about water on Barrett Mill Road. I was just going to bring it up to Water Committee. I just wanted to bring it up here, so Mr. Bear will know about it in case I forget.
Very good. And Mr. Crisp should have the results of the survey we sent out at the next Water Committee meeting, which includes the properties on Barrett Mill Road as well.
The problem is, I think we send them on this end, and this is on the other end.
That would be the case, probably.
Anything else, Mr. Hornet?
I believe that was it.
Mr. Terry?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the only thing I have is, is I would like to see us look at a way to move forward with the Second Amendment resolution that Ms. Meyer discussed. I think in the ways of the world, and upcoming potential changes, I think that is probably a smart move to take a look at that. I don't know if we need to make a motion to vote on, trying to look at adopting that resolution, or if we just ask Mr. Bear to draft and prescribe it at a later date, but I would like to see that some way start to move forward.
I think we can get Mr. Bear a copy, and he can draft it and put it on the agenda for the next meeting. It kind of goes along with what Mr. Kinsler had been talking about. You know, Mr. Kinsler talked about ordinance and passing ordinance, saying you won't pass ordinance is kind of like a double negative, but a resolution's a little bit different. We can definitely get Mr. Bear to draw that up. I think it's pretty much word, it just need to drop in the county's name.
If you will send me what you would like to have drafted, or if it's worded exactly like that, just send that to me, and I'll get that together.
Yes, sir. The VCDL sent out the base, and I'll forward that to you, and thank you for that, sir.
Anything else, Mr. Terry?
That's all I have at this time, Mr. Chairman.
I've got a few things. Mount Erie Road, VDOT did finish up on that. Nice to see a project come to fruition. Make a comment all the time, move at the speed of government, but so it is nice to see one finished. Mr. Bear, the water line, the Smith-With interconnect study, where are we at on that?
Don had done a follow-up, I can't remember who the engineer person is on it, maybe within the last two months on it, just to see what the status of where they were on it. Just today, I sent a letter to Sean Ut, just introducing myself, I know him, and just congratulating on his position, and then hoped to meet with him and talk about any of our joint project, which is primarily that water line, and see where they are on it, and where, how close their engineer is to finishing that study on that project.
Because, I mean, we're either close to a year or over a year, and we've been going back to moving at the speed of government, see if you can.
Yep. Yeah, and unfortunately, that agreement is actually between Smith County and the engineer, so we are at their mercy on it. Withfield is, we're a participant in the end, because we've got to come through it, but Smith County actually has the actual agreement with the engineering firm, but I will, I will see what we can do to move that along.
And I'll point the finger at Smith County. I've already told you all I won't be at the next meeting. I don't guess it's a big secret where Ms. Lawson's at tonight, you know, keep her and her husband, family in your prayers, but with that being said, I don't know when she's going to be back. And I don't know what your pleasure is, but.
My recommendation, Mr. Chairman, if I might, I would recommend.
Do not say call in for vacation, because my wife is threatening my life.
I was going to give you a cell phone to even help out with that.
I would say, you can take my cell phone, she's going to get rid of you, I mean.
The proper channels would be to appoint a chairman pro tem in case of the absence of a vice chair. And at this point in time, you could go ahead and do that, and then the board does not have to vote on establishing someone as a chair at that meeting. You agree, Mr. Terry?
Agreed, it'd be good to do it tonight.
Yeah.
Anybody volunteer? Coy?
No.
Oh.
Hi, I got a question.
Mr. Terry?
Yes, sir.
You want to do it?
That's fine.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
We're even, by the way.
I wonder if there was a story behind that, when you pointed it in, I'll appoint Mr. Terry as pro tem, and.
Shouldn't Ms. Lawson not be present?
Shouldn't Ms. Lawson not be present?
I will make sure she's here.
I'm sure she'd rather be here.
Absolutely.
That's all I have. Mr. McC?
I have a couple of questions I want to add. What is the timeline on our work on the Libman's Building?
I don't have a timeline. I have met with staff and have reviewed it, and what the, what the request is, and they are looking at plans of trying to get that resolved. So it has been looked at.
Has anything been done on the Byron Springs Building?
Actually, yes, sir. At 3:00 today, I met with the Buildings and Grounds Chair and the, or not Chair, the Buildings and Grounds Department, and county attorney, or county engineer reviewed the set of plans and reviewed the three proposals that we have gotten back in from the engineering firms for the design and location of that building, and that will be on the Buildings and Grounds Committee next week, for them to review those proposals and look at recommending hiring a firm to begin the design work on that building.
Is that planned to go ahead before we had planned on putting?
It, Mr. Kinsler, the county engineer, did have it designed where we talked about having it on the property. We will be working with the engineers to determine if up on the hill is the best location, or down closer to the road is the best location, and still allowing room for the entrance and exit there, and allowing room for Baron Springs Fire Department to expand if deemed necessary also.
Okay.
Unfortunately, all three firms are anticipating a cost far in exceedance of what we have been discussing, and so Buildings and Grounds Committee will have to review that and come up with a recommendation.
Well, I'm in a big hurry to get it, man.
Yep.
So that.
You all may not be, but I am.
Yep.
And I push it along, you can do, push it along.
Anything else, Mr. McRoberts?
No, no, I can do it, thank you.
Assistant county administrator position. I understand we've got a personnel committee, but I think a position like that, we, I think the whole board needs to be involved. I don't know what your thought process is, because I wasn't here last time we had one, so I'm not sure.
I welcome your input, generally, on, especially in that position. Y'all can decide how you want to do it. Historically, they've narrowed it down, the committee has narrowed it down to a few candidates, and then the full board has done the interview of those candidates, and that would be my recommendation on this, Mr. Chairman.
Am I good with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah. Like I said, I wasn't here, I guess only two people were here last time we had that position, so I wasn't sure how we'd go about that. Does anybody else have anything? Entertaining motion to go into closed section, closed session, under Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711A7, consultation with legal counsel for discussion of potential litigation regarding performance agreements.
Make that motion.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Have to do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 We're now on closed session. Do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 Mr. McRoberts, you read the certification?
That means me. Mr. Hill, that is music. Hi, resolution certification of closed meeting. Whereas Withfield County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded voting, in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2037-12 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Withfield County Board of Supervisors that such a meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. How about that? That ain't me. Now, therefore, being the office of the Withfield County Board of Supervisors, hereby certifying that, in the interest of each member's knowledge, one only public business matter, lawful exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law, were discussed in closed meeting to which this certification is required, and to only such persons. As were identified in the motion covering the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Withfield County Board of Supervisors.
Certification of closed meeting, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Do you have a second on this?
Or, I'm sorry.
I'll second that.
Have a motion, a second. Any questions or discussion? Certified a closed session, roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 All right. Mr. Bear, one thing I did just notice, if I can find it again, on page 178, the recommendation from the Economic Development Committee, I know we had took action on that, but it looks like Mr., and I can't remember the gentleman's name. Hooper had included some information, including a waiver. I don't know that, do we need to take any action on that unless?
Actually, I believe you did.
Okay.
This was presented to the committee, and in lieu of doing the waiver, the committee recommendation was to refer this to the plan. So you all have to take an action.
All right. Does anybody else have anything? Mr. Bear?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to say, some of you all may have gotten emails from the staff, but the extra day on the 4th of July was probably one of the most appreciated things I've heard from the staff. Appreciate you having that, so thank you, the Board of Supervisors, for that, for everything they've gone through this year with COVID and everyone else. It did help them have a good weekend. Thank you very much.
I did have one citizen contact me to complain. I stated my position, that I thought it was well-earned, but, you know, agree to disagree, so. Anything else, Mr. Bear?
No, sir. Just a minute.
Mr. Martin? I was kindred to call you Mr. Martin, I'm sorry. Ms. Collins? All right, we'll be adjourned.